Now that all the commissioners here, we're going to call this meeting to order, please. All right, first thing tonight is the opening prayer. Wendy, do you mind saying that for us, please?
Would you bow your heads with me, please? Our heavenly Father, we come to you tonight, first of all, always so very thankful for the very many blessings you bestow upon each of us and upon our community and our great state of Tennessee and upon our country. We ask that you would be with us tonight, lead us with guidance as we have conversations, discussions, and when necessary disagreements, remind us all that we are neighbors and we have one goal in mind, a healthy, beautiful community and the ability to serve you as it can. We ask a special blessing tonight, and we ask that you keep Beth Longmire close as she deals with some health issues. Let her know that she is missed and loved. We ask a special blessing on our first responders. As we've learned this week, they walk boldly into danger, sometimes completely unknown, so we thank you for their service and we ask your continued blessing over them. Lead us tonight and find all that we do pleasing in your sight. For this, we ask in your holy name, amen.
Altizer?
Here.
Evans?
Hardwick?
Hasty?
Here.
Kerr? Longmire? Martin? Silkwood? Slattery?
Here.
Seven present, two absent.
Thank you, Zach. All right, tonight we have several public hearings, so the first one we have is a request by Lincoln Property Company to amend the general framework map of the Hendersonville Westlake Land Use and Transportation Plan to change the character area designation of the property from Destination Recreational Opportunity Site to Industrial Flex. This property is located at parcel 160 066.01 on the southwestern side of West Main Street and Rockland Road intersection and the west side of Rockland Road as identified on Sumner County Map 160 066.01. And I don't see that... Let me make sure that... Well, is this the same one? General framework? Okay.
Yeah, we can do both.
Yeah, do both of them here?
Both of them together.
Okay.
That's fine. We'll do both of those here.
All right, so we have one person. Mr. Ritterbeck? It's up there, I see you. Will you come up and speak? Tell us your name, your address, and so on.
Thank you, Chair Altizer. Planning Commissioners, my name is Jay Ritterbeck. I'm the Economic Development and Community Planner for the city. I reside outside of the city limits, but I'm hoping to be able to speak as the Economic Development Coordinator. I've been working for months before this application was even submitted with the Lincoln Property team, not just on this project, but with the Molly Walton Project, where they took the Music City Studio site and used what was already approved, did some revisions to that, and that project is underway. You could go up and visit that site, drive by it, and see the amount of work that's being done, the immense investment that they're pouring into the community. They've... They're... We'll speak a little bit to that a little bit later, but interesting to note with a $50 million, over $50 million investment, their building permits alone, which were paid, were well over $400,000 to the city in addition to a tree bank fund that they contributed to. So the amount of investment and really rigorous review that they're going through on that project, as well as this one, what we've been doing is working collaboratively before that application is even submitted to really get an idea of what the city needs in certain areas, what we're expecting to occur, what types of buildings, what types of uses. And then we flesh out what that permit path and what that strategy would be going forward, so that when they do apply for a permit and it goes before the planning commission or even before that, as it goes to staff, that that review is as seamless, as wide open as far as what expectations are and that the data are available and have been thought through and presented in a systematic way that really... They don't have to go back to the drawing board multiple times, so really going into a project knowing what to expect. And Hendersonville is a difficult place for developers that don't know what they're doing to really get anything approved and built. So really getting developers that want to do the right thing and letting them know what all those right things are right as soon as possible really gets a good project forward. So this site was identified on the west side of town where reinvestment in the Westlake Plan area is envisioned. This was a site that was part of that Festival Center site that, right after that Festival Center overlay was adopted and approved, the city of Goodlettsville purchased a large portion of an adjacent piece of property and is looking at doing a wastewater facility there. So that whole Festival Center site or overlay was really not going to be realized after that purchase had occurred. So as we're seeing interest grow in that area, really finding something that works with the adjacent land uses and realizing that that plan was going to always need to be modified to get little pieces of it or a bigger piece in this instance and get something that's good for the city and not just, you know, total piecemeal, small development. So the team, as we're looking through, using that Molly Walton as an example of how things were done correctly through the process, you know, we mapped out a strategy to go forward and really, they then submitted the application. I've been working with staff and it's been a pleasure working with them. I hope you give it some good scrutiny and that this... The end of project is something that's a huge asset for the city. So I'll stick around if there's any questions later in the hearing, but I'm very pleased to be working with that team and to have helped at least get this project before you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ritterbeck. All right, we have a second public hearing on the same property. So it's a request by Lincoln Property Company to amend the comprehensive development plan from mixed commercial planned development to industrial planned development. This property is located at parcel 160 066.01 on the southwestern side of West Main Street and Rockland Road intersection and the west side of Rockland Road as identified on Sumner County Tax Map 160 066.01. We have nobody signed up to speak on behalf of that one, so we'll consider that hearing closed. And then the next one that we have is a request by Real Estate Solutions Group to amend the final development plan to remove the blanket rental restriction from Near Water Place Final Plan Development. The property is located at 220 Near Water Place to the west of Rockland Road and on the north side of West Main Street as identified by Sumner County Tax Map 160 050.01. We have no one signed up for that public hearing to speak on behalf of. So consider that one closed?
Yep.
All right. Then finally, request by M A R J Properties LLC to amend the Mansker Creek Final Development Plan. The property is located at 1220 Center Point Road on the north side of West Main Street and on the west side of Center Point Road as identified by Sumner County Tax Map 161 046.00. And again, we have no one signed up to speak on that one, so we'll consider that one closed. All right, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is the public comment, agenda items only. We have no one signed up to speak for that. Did anyone come in expecting to speak for any of these? All right, then we'll consider that closed and we'll move on. Next, we have the acceptance of the agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as is? Anybody want to move anything?
So move.
I got a motion. Do I have a second? I'm sorry, I heard one. All right, thank you. Mr. Martin, roll call, vote? Or can I do it by voice? Voice, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes. Thank you. All right, next is the minutes from June 3, 2025. I suspect everyone's had time to read through those. All right, do I have a motion for acceptance? So moved, I hear.
Second.
All right, a second. Again, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes. Thank you very much. All right, next we have the consent agenda. Is there anything? We only have one item on there. It is Alexander Commercial Phase Two Buena Beef Site Plan. Owner is Buena Venture Two LLC. Location 261 East Main Street, parcel 159 JA 017.00. Lead planning staffs Timothy Whitten, Caitlin Shin. Which one's taking it, Timothy?
Timothy.
All right, Timothy.
This is the third and final lot to develop over in the Alexander Commercial Development across the street here from City Hall. Fast-paced urgent care, I think just opened last week to the west and then to the east of this lot, Starbucks is about to open. Buena Beef is a quick-service restaurant. They have worked with staff to amend their... Bring their site and building into compliance with our requirements. They have a few things left to kind of polish up, but they've agreed to work with staff to get all that cleared up and have agreed to all staff comments.
My only question is the applicant is here, and I assume you are, is Wendy, you plan, assuming this gets approved tonight, when do you plan to start construction and what is your timeline to being open for business?
At Eric Peterson, 7075 Veterans Boulevard, Burridge, Illinois. I'm with Keystone, we're the architect. As soon as we get through the entitlement process, hopefully that occurs tonight, then the next step would be the permitting. 714 is our target date to get submitted and then as soon as we can get all permits in hand, we'd be looking to break ground and it would probably be a six to seven month construction schedule from there. So early next year, we'd be looking to open.
Perfect. Well, thank you so much for bringing your business to Hendersonville and we look forward to having another eating establishment.
We appreciate it. We look forward to joining your community.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other commissioners have anything to say? All right. They've agreed to everything, so I'll entertain the motion. We have a motion by Commissioner Martin. Do we have a second? With staff comments, thank you.
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Wendy. All right, roll call.
Motion to approve passed with seven yeses.
Thank you very much. All right, next on our agenda is a future land use amendment and a rezoning. This one is by Lincoln Rockland. It's a future land use amendment. Owner is Frank Richard Messenger Living Trust. Location parcel 160 point zero... 160 066.01. Lead planning staff is Timothy Whitten. Timothy, would you like to speak on this one?
Sure, and I'll... My report's going to cover both the future land use plan change and the rezoning.
Thank you.
CDP.
So we're combining eight and nine. Okay.
So this is a 26-acre tract. It's located south of TNT Water Sports in Campbell Car Wash. It's north of the railroad track and the Water... White House Utility Treatment Plant just off Rockland Road. This is part of the old Festival Center Plan Development, which is an MXCPD. The future land use plan calls for this area, which is the area shown in green, to be Destination Recreational Opportunity Site. The Festival Center, that's the old 1986-era master plan that showed larger kind of big box mall shopping center type development. Of course, that never developed until like 2018, 2020, when the plan was slightly modified to allow for the Campbell Car Wash and the racetrack fuel station on Galton Road. So the proposal is, this is the same group as Jay mentioned, the same group that's doing the industrial development on the east end of Molly Walton. They are proposing a similar type development, so this will be principally warehousing and light manufacturing kind of facilities. They are requesting an amendment to the future land use plan to go from Destination Recreational Opportunity Site to Industrial Flex and to change the zoning from MXCPD to Industrial Plan Development. The new master plan will replace a portion of the old Festival Center master plan. So if this passes, there will still need to be a... There should be a remaining portion of that old Festival Center site that will... Whenever that develops, that portion of that old master plan will have to... There will have to at least be an amendment to bring that into, to sync that with this current plan. This current plan is quite a bit different, obviously, in uses and in layout, so the two do not mesh or synchronize. So whenever that remaining portion develops, there'll be a master plan amendment to, you know, bring that road into alignment and make sure everything lines up. And Zach, if you... Can you go to the... Yeah, the... Yeah, that plan right there. So that shows the surrounding zoning. All that orange, that's the Festival Center. Of course, with the Lincoln Property highlighted there. To the west, to the west, or sorry, to the east, you've got heavy commercial towards the bottom, general commercial across Rockland Road. And then to the west is the remainder of that Festival Center property and then industrial beyond that to the west. And that yellow to the south, that SR1, that's the Corps of Engineers, Rockland Park property. The city's transportation plan calls for the extension of Rockland Road through the Festival Center property over to South Center Point Road. The developer is proposing to build... The portion of the road that runs through their 26 acres, which is about a third of the overall length of the road. They're proposing to build two industrial buildings that total about 255,000 square feet. Proposed uses have been pared down from the larger list of uses that's allowed in the base industrial zoning district. And you can see which uses are... Which uses are allowed there on the right and the ones that they have eliminated on the left. Do we have the future land use plan? In the deck? Yeah, right there. So this is the future land use plan. You can see the character area that they are requesting Industrial Flex is to the east of them and also beyond the Festival Center property over to the west. That's also Industrial Flex. They're requesting to have that same Industrial Flex character area kind of tagged on there. So at the end of the staff report, you'll find a list of items that the planning commission should consider when evaluating a planned development. Not that you're limited to those. And then in planning comment staff, planning comment number one are the findings of fact that should be included in any motion. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Timothy. I appreciate that. All right, planning commissioners, do any of you all have questions? Anyone want to say anything?
Well, before they come up, I did have a question for staff. Did you say that we're going to go ahead and, excuse me, rezone all of that area? Or we're rezoning just the piece they're looking for?
Just the piece that they're... They're 26 acres, so not the entire Festival Center. It's just that portion of that.
So my follow-up question to that is, does it make sense to go ahead and rezone all that? Because it needs to be industrial. It's not going to be recreational use. I think it was said that the city of Goodlettsville has purchased a piece of this and that it's headed all in that direction and this would help possibly speed up the development of that whole area. So I leave that up to the staff. From my opinion, it seems like it would be a good thing to just, let's go ahead and put it on the books. This is where we want to see this area developed, and I'll leave it.
Yeah, and I think that's something we can look at. One thing that kind of comes into play is with the city of Goodlettsville. We worked out an arrangement on a deal a couple of years ago where the city of Hendersonville has the right of first refusal. So if it did come up, then we would get an opportunity to purchase the property at that time. But that could be something that this is successful and done. That may be an endeavor. We may want to... We may want to rescind the balance of what's left of the Festival Center and dissolve it and then just rezone that property. So that is a possibility that we could do that.
I think what I'm hearing you say is, let's don't do it now. Let's look at it down the road and...
Yeah, it's one thing where the... If the city of Hendersonville eventually is able to control the property, then we'll make sure all those things are done. For right now, maybe the best place for it to park is remaining in the Festival Center. Because then at that point, just like the developers are coming this evening, any other future owner of the property, whether it's city of Goodlettsville or if it's, they sell it to somebody and it's not us, then they would have to come back and go through this process as well.
Okay.
And also the remainder of that property has not been properly noticed and noticed and sent out, so.
Commissioner Evans, I'll see you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In looking at this and thinking back to our Westlake program and what we talked about on the transportation plan, we've got Rockland Road on the transportation plan. We are now going to extend it down to Center Point Road. We talked a while back about a waste facility that had maybe some traffic problems down through there. If that facility had gone in, which it didn't, but we talked extensively about traffic in that area. The transportation plan on one end of Rockland Road calls for a roundabout that is desperately needed down there to disperse traffic in all directions. One way would be Imperial Drive. We're in serious need of some traffic thoroughfares parallel to Highway 31 Main Street to get the traffic dispersed in other directions. And putting all these pieces together that we've been talking about for a while, if you go on Rockland Road from the roundabout in front of the post office, if it ever got built, down the newly developed Rockland Road onto Center Point Road, we have a parallel street as far as we can get it, all the way down to Imperial Drive and Drake's Creek at that point. So in looking at, okay, what are we going to do with that traffic? We do have Center Point Road. We've got an entrance ramp and an exit ramp all directions except north. We can't go north on 386 off of Center Point Road. So if you back up to what I understand is the old Exit 3 that was intended to go across the bridge, that was supposed to go across the lake, it would seem to me that we should somehow make provisions for that loop that we get back on Main Street to go straight ahead and deadhead into Rockland Road with a traffic light or whatever. That gives us north, south, east, and west on the bypass as well as a direct exit on and off of Rockland Road to what I think is going to be a really nice development down in there for something other than residential, something that might need access to more transportation. So what I'm saying is I would hope that we would pay attention to that as we develop that area and look for that parallel thoroughfare all the way from Mansker Creek down to Drake's Creek, paralleling Highway 31 and getting some of that traffic off of 31. We do have... The bypass is slated for improvement, so it only makes sense to try to get the traffic in that direction if we can.
Can you pull... Do we have the image? That's the image that's the orange that shows the road going all the way through? It's a different one. Or maybe we don't have that one up there. Okay, yeah, we... Yeah, there's a different one and it shows it, just as you were saying, Commissioner, that that goes all the way over to South Center Point. So in addition to the Goodlettsville property that we have the right of first refusal, we also got... Yeah, this shows it real well. We also have 64-foot of right-of-way along the Goodlettsville property that they've agreed to give to us, as well as once we get past that where Century Steel is located over off South Central or South Center Point. They also have an easement with a note to dedicate that as future right-of-way with a construction easement as well, so that we could get that across there. So this development here, I think, develops 34%? Yeah, 34% of that total east-west collector. And then that roadway down through there, it's a two-lane with a bike, with a, I think a 10-foot bike path on one side, as well as it has a center turn lane with a couple of areas we're going to have some medians in, just a few. So this is going to be a pretty substantial right-of-way where that if something happened and we could ever come off of there, we wanted to make sure to have ample roadway width and right-of-way for exactly what you're talking about. So this kind of tees that up where that could be a possibility. And for other developments that we've looked at over here, we've thought about that working with Jay Ritterbeck, our Economic Development Community Planner. We've been looking at that as, you know, what we could potentially do coming off that spur and doing something a little bit different, sort of like what you're talking about. Thank you.
Commissioner Slattery.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Along the lines of traffic management and future plans, my eyes are drawn to one of the proposed allowable uses, two actually, under industrial uses, trucking companies/terminal and warehouse/distribution. Right now, getting trucks in and out of that area, I'm taking my life into my own hands if I turn on the Imperial at the post office, only to look forward to what could be an even greater nightmare down at the end of where Rockland Road terminates today at 31, if there is any kind of heavy truck traffic, not even heavy, if there's moderate truck traffic at that area. So I'm concerned that those are two industrial uses that are still allowable without the road improvements that we are looking forward to in the future. Thank you.
Commissioner Kerr, I saw you were lit up.
My question's been answered.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, time for the applicant. Okay, hold on one second. He's got something.
I will just share something. As we move forward later and get to a point to do the vote, this will be one of those that's going to have two votes. There'll be the vote on the future land use plan and that starts and stops with the planning commission. But then separately, there'll be a vote for the combined development plan rezoning as a recommendation that goes to BOMA. So there'll be, this will consist of two votes. But we do the future land use plan first and then do the other one after that.
Now, does anyone from the applicant, or anyone from the applicant in the audience, will you please come to the podium? State your name, your address, please. Thank you.
Want to thank you all for your time, first of all, for letting us present to you today. A year ago tomorrow, we were here standing at the same podium talking about the Molly Walton Industrial Project and thanks to the support of the staff, the planning commission, and others. It's been a large team effort. We're underway. We'll deliver the first building in December with the subsequent buildings delivering by, call it, June of next year. And candidly, our experience through this process has led us to just want to do more in Hendersonville. The feedback we've received, the process throughout, how diligent you all are, makes the project... the project a lot more successful, and the execution speaks for itself. So with that, you know, came across this site through conversations with Jay Ritterbeck about how can we do more here? Where is there underutilized land that may not be currently zoned for the highest and best use, and how can we find something that creates more jobs for the community, creates more growth in Hendersonville, and is something that the community can get on board with? So with that, just wanted to say, one, thank you for your time. Obviously, I understand questions on traffic, and I think, you know, through our experience on Molly Walton, we were able to learn some of the kind of low-hanging fruit, if you will, of lessons learned, that stuff we should be doing better, such as extending the roadway. You know, we, we're doing that on Molly Walton for future connectivity to Forest Retreat Road and the interchange as part of the T-Dot project by dedicating the sixty-four-foot right-of-way and building thirty-four percent of the road extension for Rockland, with the hopes that, long-term, the traffic that, that currently is plaguing you on Rockland Road is actually going over towards South Center Point Road, and then trucks or cars can get onto Main Street by taking a right and getting onto the loop, rather than, you know, taking that left-hand turn. So we can address questions on traffic. We've got Kimmy Horn here as well, who's our civil engineer, also our civil engineer on the Molly Walton project, so they're very familiar. But more than anything, we want to incorporate your feedback. The planning staff has been phenomenal to work with, and we really appreciate your time.
Any commissioners have questions, any comments that you want? Questions from the applicants? All right. I don't see anything. So with that, we have two votes per what Keith has described, so the first vote would be the future land use. Okay, go right ahead. Right here. Okay. First vote is on the future land use plan and the traffic amendment. So he's scratching off mine right now, the rezoning part of that, since it's not that, we're just dealing with the fans, future land use and traffic plan. So with that being said, do I have a motion, one way or the other?
I would like to make a motion to change the future land use map for that area, for that particular piece of property, since that's what we're limiting it to, to be the industrial flex. Is that correct?
That's correct.
What else do I need to add?
That's all you have to do. And do I have a second? Okay, we have a se, no, I hear a second from you, Mr. Evans? All right, thank you. Now, roll call.
Motion to approve, passed with seven yeses.
Thank you, Zachary. Okay, now we have a second vote that has to be on the Lincoln/Rockland Combined Development Plan. So this one is a little more complicated in your motion. It has to include everything on, is it page five, six? Is that correct? It's page six, right? No, page five.
It might be in the staff comments.
It's in the staff comments. Yeah, staff comment number one. Yep, number one in the staff comments.
That's it.
So it's on page seven, sorry, y'all.
Yeah, so when we're, when we're doing a, a combined development plan, or a preliminary development plan, or just even a straight rezoning, so a part of that is to have findings of fact. So it's always, whenever we're making the recommendation, it's going to BOMA, we want to list some findings of fact, that kind of, you know, at least one of those that address what Timothy has listed in his staff comments under item number one.
All right. So I'll entertain a motion, and this is on our item number nine, and this is the combined development plan. Okay, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Kerr.
So can someone speak to the, the brewery tap room, exactly what we're talking about there? If that is a potential use, what, what we're talking about there?
That is not a use we, we honestly foresee on the site. If that was taken out of the permitted uses, that would not be an issue with us.
Yeah, I would like to make that amendment.
So we have an amendment to remove the brewery tap room, right?
Correct.
So if we get a motion, then you'll need to make sure you include that in, in the motion. All right, do we have a motion? No motion?
Some move.
Oh, some move, yep, we have a motion, all right. Do I have a second? Okay, hold on one second, Keith's going to offer some opinions.
Yeah, just to, so what this would be, a proper motion on this would be the recommend approval of the development plan for Lincoln, for CDP, for Lincoln/Rockland, with removing the use of brewery tap room, and additionally, noting, listing the findings of fact that the area is, that is in compliance with the future land use plan, and that this zoning is an appropriate zoning for that area. So that would be an example of, of what a motion could be.
Do you want to give it another try, Mr. Kerr?
I'll do it.
Okay, you go right ahead.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
What he said.
There you go. Did you get that? We got it, I think, yeah. We got it, Zach.
All right, do we have a second for that motion?
Yes.
Okay, we have a second from Commissioner Hardwick. All right, we'll do a roll call now.
Motion to approve, passed with seven yeses.
Thank you, Zach. All right. We move to the next item. Make sure I'm on the right thing. Next item is Mansker Creek Future Development Plan Amendment Major. Owner is M A R J Properties LLC, location parcel one sixty-one, zero four six point zero zero. Lead planning staff is Keith on this one, so you want to explain this, Keith?
Yeah, I sure would. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Mansker, Mansker Creek. This is the area, as you're coming in from the west city limits, from Madison, from Davidson County, right on the left where you see the area that's a, kind of a fill area, has been a fill area for, for quite some time. This property actually has, for quite some time, had a planned development on it, just nothing was actually ever, ever constructed. So it's had planned developments, had amended planned developments, it's had final development plans, and some of those final development plans were amended. And what this is, is the, the current owners of the property are trying to prepare it for development. And in order to do that, the current, the current layout of, of the approved final development plan for this area had more of like a nineties retail center, where everything's at the back, and we really don't actually have a lot of that type of thing here, here in our community. But it's stuff that you'd see that was built in the nineties, was that kind of retail, retail center. And so what they want to do is something that's a little bit different, that breaks the buildings up, you know, lays it out differently, brings more of the buildings to the front. And in order to do that, that was a substantial change from the latest final development plan that was approved several years ago. And so with this particular development plan, it encompasses, it's the area, tract A is, if everybody knows where Tractor Supply is over off of Center Point Road, that's within this, this particular planned development. That's already developed, and this, the remaining portions here, are what we refer to as tracks B, C, and D. And the proposal here with the concept, and this is really an early concept, the owners or developers could maybe address kind of an overview here in a minute, you know, what, what they're wanting to do. At this point, they don't necessarily, unless something's changed, they don't have a particular commercial development that's going to happen on, on the, on the site, they're just trying to prepare it. And conceptually, they're looking at, on those tracks B, C, and D, they're looking, this is some of the older stuff, that was like one of the original things that was approved, that's up on the screen right now. But they're proposing a hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one square feet. The two thousand and six final development plan, which is the latest thing we have that was approved, that actually had a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred. So this is, this is substantially lower square footage than what was originally approved. What you see up on the screen now is, is the, the proposal that you, that you have before you this, this evening. I would just, I would just mention, this property, just, just for the record, this property used to be called Mansker Creek Village, and then the name was changed years ago to Center Point Joint Venture, and then eventually to Mansker Creek, which is what we're continuing to call it. I just wanted to, to note that, note that for the record. In looking at the uses, the uses that you can see on the right of the screen, the, this development being back in two thousand and six, it has what our old zoning ordinance had for uses. And so what we did as a staff is we looked at those old uses and then transferred those to what current uses are. And all those uses lined up actually pretty good. Normally, they may not, but these particular uses lined up with uses that we have identified, you know, currently in our ordinance. And so this kind of cleans all that up and makes it clear what the, what the uses are. A couple of things just to note that are things that, when this property develops, there is right-of-way and possible construction of a portion of the green belt along Mansker Creek that would eventually connect over to JP Two, go up to the north, up within that area. Additionally, the, the owner developers have agreed to mirror what we had the Jeep dealership do across the street with the stone columns and the fencing, so they will mirror, mirror that. There'll be quite a bit of, of landscaping there, because we tried to look and be very sensitive to, this is a gateway to our community, so we want to make sure it's as attractive as possible. Additionally, there would be, it either, there'd either be new decorative streetlights, but those lines over there are a little bit low, so it might be streetlights, or it might be replacing some of those streetlight arms with decorative arms that are on those poles. That could be a possibility. And see if there was anything else that I had left out. Also, those two entrances, they've added the entrance over there that's right by Center Point Barbecue. That's the original design, kind of having that median, kind of fancy entry. The other entry that they have on the other side, they also added to make that a more attractive entryway as well. There's some different things that aren't really directly associated with our consideration tonight, that are being worked out with Public Works and with TDEC in regards to some of the fill on the edges of the area, and that's being worked on, and it's just going to take a little bit of time to resolve, but that really doesn't have any impact on, on what we're, what we're doing, doing tonight in revising, revising this plan. And so, Mr. Chairman, that's just a, just kind of an overview of, of this. It's kind of exciting, though, to be able to kind of clean up, and we really appreciate the owners working with us, to clean this development plan up, to prepare it for moving toward the future. One thing, one thing I didn't have them do is because they don't really have a particular business that they're looking necessarily to put here, so I really didn't want to give a bunch of images, because they really didn't have any designs. But what they did agree to, and they agreed to all the staff comments, and they put it on their plan, they've agreed to exceed the design standards. So once we're doing the individual site plans for each, each part of the development that occurs, then, then the expectation is they'll, they should even exceed our design standards, versus just meeting those design standards. So that was, that was pretty good. And then what this allows too is appro, if, 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 if the, this amended final development plan is approved, what it allows is then, if, as this develops and it needs, the buildings need to move a little bit this way or that with the current layout, that can be done, you know, without coming back and having to do, you know, a major revision to the, to the development plan. So happy to answer any question, and there's, I believe the owner or the owners, yeah, the owner is, is here as well, they can discuss it.
All right. Commissioner Slattery, you have a question?
Out of curiosity, why the, the size of the parcel is dropping by an additional almost fifty thousand, sixty thousand square feet?
Oh, what that, what that is, it's kind of split between the pages. What that is, is that's the building square footage.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, so the, the overall land size is staying the same, but the building square footage, originally, back in nineteen eighty-seven, when the original planned development was approved, it had a total of two hundred and forty-three thousand square foot. And then now we're looking at a hun, we're looking at, with Tractor Supply, it'll be a hundred and thirty-two thousand.
Thank you.
Square foot.
Commissioner Hardwick, you have questions?
So does the owner not want to speak to us tonight?
Oh, yeah, I think they're ready.
Okay. Do you have any, anybody else?
I'll save my questions for when they're over.
That's good. Any other questions for Keith, well, before we go out there? All right. Will the owner give up and speak, please? Thank you. Will you tell your name and where you're from?
Yeah, good evening. I'm actually representing the owner, I'm the civil engineer with Bard Civil Associates. My name is Ryan Woodson. Our office is in Nashville, West Nashville. So we got approached by the owner, M A R J Properties, to help them sort out, I think it was alluded to, some, some fill along the floodway and in the floodplain. And we started meeting with Public Works and the stormwater department to discuss how we were going to, to do kind of a mass grading on the site, what steps needed to be taken with that to get a land disturbance permit. We started talks with TDEC and the Corps of Engineers as well. And during that process, they said, well, we think you should also meet with planning and discuss the FDP and any amendment that would be required there. So as is mentioned, the property owner themselves have no intention to develop the site. They would, assuming this gets approved, eventually there'd be a plat, and each parcel would be sold off individually to be developed, obviously following the guidelines of this, of this amendment, but that's the plan so far.
See, you made the comment that they do not plan to develop the site. It's been for sale for quite a while. You, you said they're probably going to sell it off in different parcels. So why are we seeing buildings here that may or may not be what's going to be developed? Buildings up front, building in the back, some's a big building, some's a little building? Wouldn't it be better to just show the different parcels and how they're going to be split off and sold?
That's probably related to, to staff. What it is, is with that current planned development, having all those buildings up there, it, it sort of, yeah, this is it right here. That's sort of set, this is the overall quality and the layout of the plan, and they know, they, they know they're not going to do that. And so then that puts it in a position where they can't just come in with a site plan to do what we're looking at this evening. They have to have something, they have to have something that's similar to the approved final development plan, because this is actually what was, you know, what was approved. It doesn't have to be exact, but this is, this is a lot different than...
Understand.
Yeah, but...
But I know they're not going to build what they're showing us tonight.
Right, that's...
That's not what's going to get built here.
Yeah.
I, I am a hundred percent agreeable that it needs to be leveled, it needs to be graded, you need to, all the things that need to be done. I'm just confused, why these boxes and wouldn't it be better to just show it's back to raw land, and we give them the grading permit? And where are the parcels? I mean, are we talking about three parcels that are going to get sold, or how are the parcels going to be divided? And I'm just confused about this, the way it's presented and what we're trying to do here. Because I know what's being shown is not what's going to be developed.
If you, if you took it to where nothing was on the, nothing was on there, then you're really talking about taking it back to straight zoning, which is something that the applicant was very interested in doing, to take it back to just straight commercial zoning. But with that...
We don't want to do that.
With that, you'd have more than those permitted uses, and you wouldn't have all the different extra things that come along with the, with the planned development. So in order to do a planned development, even if you don't know exactly what it is, but they definitely know it's not going to develop like a strip center.
Correct.
So they know that's not going to happen. So however it develops, this is... this is probably closer to it, although that may end up being just three buildings. Or it could be one building, you know, and it could, it could be something where it's one track or it could be two tracks or, or three.
Really, it's going to come back, the plan's going to get changed again?
Oh, yeah, yes, I would say so. The, but to the degree that it changes, if this gets approved, we'll determine whether it comes back here or whether we just do it at staff. But staff was not comfortable from, if you can go back to that old one, staff was not comfortable that, and it was a long time ago that BOMA approved it, but staff wasn't comfortable that if BOMA approved that, then we're moving forward with a site plan that is radically different than that, you know? Which probably, even though it's radically different, would probably be much superior to what, to what this would be. But that's a very good, that's a very good question. And, and on this, typically what we have seen here with a lot of the planned developments that the Planning Commission has reviewed and dug into, those really have been things where they really did already have a vision of what they wanted to do. So we got a 50% or 80% concept of probably what they were going to do. In this instance, they actually don't know exactly what they, what they want to do. But I, but I can't allow them to move forward with site plans with what they already have approved. And I can't allow it to be divided up, you know, in a manner that doesn't really, doesn't really jive with what we have approved. And that, that's kind of where it, that's kind of where, where it is.
I'm still confused, but I think, I think I know where we're headed.
Okay.
Sorry, if I can add one note on the layout of the buildings, that the previously approved plan, the majority of the building was in the floodplain. So we're attempting to kind of move, I think this was mentioned in the staff report, but we're attempting to move the buildings closer to, to Main Street to get them out of the floodplain.
Commissioner Slatter, you have questions?
Thank you. Actually, a question for Keith. Thank you for being here tonight. I'm confused as well. So if they're not going to develop the property and they're going to sell it off in individual parcels, who has agreed to exceeding our design requirements?
What that would be is just like any of our other planned developments, whatever those agreements are, they're not limited to just whoever that original developer is. It goes with the land. And so when these, when these develop with each site plan, then everything with the site plan transfers, transfers over.
Okay.
Sometimes that would be, could be, oh, you've got to do this amenity. When you develop your part of it, you've got to do your portion of the amenity. Very similar thing is actually Indian Lake. So the Indian Lake Commercial Area, Saundersville Road, Indian Lake Boulevard, all of that. So all of that had a development plan, you know, just like what we're looking at this one tonight. And sometimes it lined up pretty close, but a lot of times things really got moved around. And then what actually ended up getting built was still really close to the spirit of it, but it wasn't exactly. It's the same thing that, that you were talking about, Commissioner Hardwick, is, you know, what the plan is, that wasn't exactly what ended up getting built, but it was pretty, pretty close, you know, to it, but not, not exact. And so that's kind of what the plan does. It kind of tees up and helps us when the site plans come forward and that comes before the Planning Commission, to then hold them to whatever the standard of the, of the planned development is going to be. And so that's kind of the way that it is. But this is different because this is something where they don't really have exactly, nailed down exactly or real close to what they want to do. But they do know it can't be what it is now because all of that is back in the floodplain. And they can't, they can't have those buildings, you know, back in there.
Commissioner Martin?
I just wanted to circle back to this property being right at the entrance, the welcoming of Hendersonville's vehicles come through. Moving the buildings, I get why we're doing it, but they're very close to the road and it looks like they would be actually be the back of a house for the buildings with utilities and meters and electrical stuff. Do you have something in there that, that would prevent, prevent that being done like unsightly facing Main Street?
Yeah. And, and that would be, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't be just limited to this. It could be anything that we were doing, that we were doing a site plan. In this particular one, all four corners of the bill, all four sides of the building are going to have to be very attractive facing. So, you know, whatever the different utilities or where that's going to go, all that would have to be done in a manner where it's concealed and, and all of that. And we would look at that specifically at the, at the site plan. Is that correct, Timothy? Timothy may.
Yeah, that, that's correct. And our, just our basic building design standards have hardwired into them that the front of the building facing the street, whether it's the operational front or not, has to look like the front of the building and has to have all of the, all the bells and whistles that you'd expect. So if this does develop this way, if their actual front is facing 386, that's going to have to look good, just, just as good as the side that's facing Main Street. I mean, it's kind of, it's going to be four sided architecture and yeah, figuring out where those utility hookups go. That's all something that will get fleshed out at the site plan level like, like we usually do.
A somewhat good example of that would be, what's the Mexican restaurant that's being built on?
Rio Bravo.
Rio Bravo. Rio Bravo is a pretty good example. You know, it's got four sides that they had to make, you know, pretty attractive and they've got a lot of different things going on. And as you see that develop, you know, all four sides are going to be pretty, pretty attractive with that. So especially facing there, there'll be extra scrutiny with that. And that's part of the reason I wanted to get that language in there, that they're agreeing to exceed our design review. So there's no question, you know, when, whenever these properties do develop, that it's, it's got to be exceptional. It, it just can't be mediocre. And then we can hold them to that, whoever it is, we can hold them to that at the site plan phase because that's in the plan. So basically what happens is, and this relates to other things we'll be discussing, we have the zoning ordinance and that's where the authority comes from. The planned development, planned developments like this, they get their authority from the zoning ordinance. And then the deals or the negotiated things that happen, like you're going to exceed the design review, that's all a part of that negotiated part of the planned development. And so that's kind of how all of that, all of that functions. So it's all, it's all very tied together. Good, very good question.
Any other commissioners have questions? No questions, then I'll entertain a motion. Have a motion from Commissioner Martin. Do I have a second? Have a, have a second from Commissioner Kerr? And okay. All staff comments are included. All right. Thank you very much. So we'll do a roll call.
Motion to approve passed with seven yeses.
Thank you, Zach. Okay. Next on the agenda is Near Water Place Final Development Plan Amendment. Owner is Real Estate Solutions Group. Location 220 Near Water Place Parcel 160050.01. Lead planning staff is Zach Coleman. Zach?
Thank you.
Take it away.
So Near Water Place Final Development Plan was recommended for approval by HBC on June 7th, 2022. And then it was approved by BOMA on June 28th, 2022 with Resolution 2022-18. It shows 49 townhome units on a little over six acres on the property located next to 1090 West Main Street, which is the Waffle House and the on-ramp to 386 right there. It's a little wedged shaped property. The applicant, Real Estate Solution Group, is requesting an amendment to the final development plan to remove the blanket rental restriction from the Near Water Place Final Development Plan. And with that, Real Estate Solution Group provided a letter through counsel to supplement the request. So staff had no comments on this.
Thank you very much. Thanks for telling. Again, I'll repeat myself. Any commissioners have questions? All right. So will the applicant?
I have a comment, I guess.
Okay, go right ahead, Charles.
When this project was discussed here at the Planning Commission just about two years ago, a little over, I know there was a lot of discussions about, you know, is it going to be rentals? Or are there going to be condos for sale? You know, and I know then, I think Mr. Ely indicated that his, his goal is to build units for sale. And I believed him. And I think that was put in there based on the comments that that's my goal. And we approved that. Realizing that things have changed in two years. Economic conditions, good, bad, or otherwise, and just generally things have changed. Maybe the project just didn't go as was originally visualized. And I can understand the developer wanting to make this request. And I believe if he had have come in and said, hey, this is what's going on. But I kind of take exception to the fact that we are now accused of regulatory taking, denying somebody of due process and, you know, just unconstitutional conditions doctrine. I believe all that is unnecessary based on what was transpired and what could happen. To come in with a letter accusing, I don't know about BOMA, but planning commissioners of treating this guy like dirt. I don't think we did that. And that was what he agreed to at the time. And I understand changes. And if he'd have come back and politely asked, I'd probably vote for it. But I didn't appreciate the comments from the attorney. That's all I can say.
Thank you, Commissioner Hasty. I see Commissioner Kerr, you're lit up. So go ahead and speak.
Yeah, yeah. Quick question. The 49 units, anybody here representing any of those units, ownership wise? How many, how many of those units stand empty today? Do we know?
Okay, we, I don't think that's a question we can answer. So now if the applicant or the lawyer would like to come up and speak, feel free. Just take your name, please.
Thank you all. Marty Cook, 100 Bluegrass Commons, Hendersonville. I represent the applicant. To answer that question to start off, none of them have been sold. So they are all vacant at this time. And, you know, I certainly am, am sorry that you all saw the letter as a threat. I mean, we were, we were asserting what we believe to be our legal position and our opinion here. And we do believe this is a unique situation for a couple of reasons. We, we believe the property is uniquely situated. And we believe the, the way that this blanket rental restriction was put into place when it came through the process was also a little unusual. I, as you all know, I've been involved in many developments throughout the city. And, and a lot of times when there is a hope for the legislative bodies to place certain restrictions on these developments, we want to negotiate that. We'll maybe work into the restrictions and covenants of, of that, of that subdivision, certain rental restrictions, certain percentages, and that's often negotiated along the way. And then ultimately those conditions are placed on it and everybody agrees to it. What was a little unusual here is it was Mr. Ely's goal for all of these units to be owner occupied. As Mr. Hasty said, no question about that. However, throughout the process, there really wasn't any negotiation. It just, at the end of the BOMA vote, there was a motion made that there would just be no rentals. The vote went down. The goal was that there weren't going to be rentals anyway. And so that's the way it happened. And as Mr. Hasty said, in the last two years, interest rates, economics, things have changed. I think you all would agree, it's a very attractive product. It's an attractive development. But there has not been interest in purchasing these units. And it's not that they're overpriced. They're actually priced under cost and they're still not selling. However, there has been interest from folks who would like to rent them. I think the uniqueness of the property location is that it's not in the middle of other owner occupied properties. It's in a very unique place next to Waffle House. And the closest residential properties are apartments just up the way, which are all rental units. And so those are the factors that led to our conversations and ultimately asserting what we believe to be our legal opinion as to why there might be some issues with the way that blanket rental restriction was placed into this ordinance and why we're requesting respectfully that that be lifted. And it, you know, again, there are negotiations that can be had. We would be willing to consider certain reasonable restrictions, something short of, none of these units can ever be rented. So that's the request. Again, my apologies if my letter came across as threatening or simply pointing out that those types of restrictions in certain instances can have legal issues. And because of that, we wanted to start the discussion and to respectfully request this amendment. Thank you.
Commissioner Martin, I see you're lit up. So go ahead and speak.
Yes. Thank you for bringing this exciting project to us. I took the same offense to that, to the letter that, that you submitted as, as Mr. Hasty described. There were some confusing parts of it, more confusing than that newsletter that went out yesterday. So I wanted to ask you, in your lawsuit threat, you reference regulatory taking. Item two, total regulatory takings where governmental action deprives a property owner, all economically beneficial use of her property. But Mr. Ely is currently allowed to sell his units, which is a significant economic use of the property, right?
That is one economic use of the property, but it's not all economic uses of the property.
Okay. And then additionally, there could be no taking because Mr. Ely was under no obligation to build the for sale units after he got his requested planned development approved, but proceeded to build on his own.
I'm sorry, what portion of the letter are you referencing?
The same number one, the one I just described.
I don't understand.
Where you said there's a governmental action deprives a property owner, all economically beneficial use of her property. You said there's a governmental taking?
Yes. He's been deprived of the opportunity to fully achieve the economic benefit of the property.
In your lawsuit threat, you cite the Penn.
And sir, can I correct you?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Nowhere in that letter do I threaten the lawsuit.
It's actually in the first paragraph. Please be advised, yada, yada, yada. Anyway, in your lawsuit.
Can you show me the word lawsuit, Mr. Martin? I don't see it.
In your, in your lawsuit, you cite the Penn central factors and say, regarding the first factor, their prohibition on rentals has a, had a profound economic impact, given that Ely has been unable to sell fee simple interest. And Mr. Ely agreed on selling his units. And that's what got the required votes to approve his controversial planned development.
Is that a question?
No, it's a statement. All right. In your lawsuit threat, you cite the Penn central factor and say, as for the second factor, presumably when Ely or any other real estate investor or developer purchases property, as for the second factor, presumably, when Ely or any other real estate investor or developer purchases property and begin the development approval process, they assume that they will be able to use their property in the most economical, economically beneficial way. The problem with the case you're citing is that that's on, that involves lost coal mining rights. We're talking about selling versus leasing units.
Property rights.
All right, in your lawsuit threat, you claim an equal protection and substantive due process violation. And that under the rational basis review, a court determines whether government action is a reasonable means of achieving a legitimate governmental interest. You then make an accusation, accusation that our city's goal was to keep out renters because they're viewed as undesirable.
What was your goal, Commissioner Martin?
First, no one has made such a statement, and the accusation is not appreciated.
Fair enough.
Secondly, you actually admit elsewhere in your letter that Tennessee and other courts have held the right to alienate, e.g. rent, property is not a fundamental right for equal protection and substantive due process.
Is that a question?
I'm just pointing it out. In your lawsuit threat, you reference the unconstitutional conditions doctrine. The issue here seems to be the right to alienate lease, which you've already admitted, Tennessee and other courts have held the right to alienate, rent, property is not a fundamental right. Your lawsuit threat does not reference the property in question, that it did not have adequate legal access because TDOT would not allow access that close to their entrance room. Mr. Ely proceeded with construction without giving notice to D, to TDOT as required. That way, TDOT could not stop the project. My question is, does the property now have legal access?
Yes.
Could you articulate why? Last letter I read, TDOT said, you don't have access into that property. So if you have unclean hands, how can you assert rights?
I have no idea what you're referencing. Sure, come on. I think you should, in light of this.
My name is Lynn Ely. I'm here on behalf of Real Estate Solutions Group. And I'm happy to address that question or any others that come up as we continue conversation. I think the question was, do we have right to our access? And the answer is yes. Commissioner Martin, I heard you say you, the last letter you had, didn't say that. I'm happy to give you another one. Or what, if you need a, a current file, I'm happy to share, if that's what you're asking for.
I, I would love the latest letter. The one that I had said that they were going to require you to build a second entrance. Is that still in the-
That's, yes, that is part of one of the future conditions of the development of neighboring property. There's an expectation, to put it candidly, there's an expectation of the city to require access to this, additional access to this property through development of neighboring property, similar to like the Rockland Road project you talked about earlier, how you're planning on extending a road through another people, another person's property. It's the same situation.
All right, you said the city's requiring it. Is that, is TDOT refer-
It's, I think, my understanding is TDOT's expecting the city to require that in the future.
Okay.
But I, I don't have a letter in front of me. I can get it for you. We had to go, just to give you the history of that. The gentleman that I was working with at TDOT gave me permission to do exactly what's developed today. Very loosely, though. I didn't get anything like I should have in, anything better in writing. I had an email that was pretty sloppy at best, when he said, you're fine, or we don't have jurisdiction of this, the access is already there, don't alter it, things of that nature. I went on about my business through city due process, and that person retired, a new person came in. They were informed about the project. They wanted to look into it further. They had me go through a, a pretty rigorous exercise of getting some sort of exception permit or something, which I followed through with that. So all that's, all that's up to snuff, and I've got that. I made sure I followed through with that. There, I think you said I, I don't have clean hands over it or something. I made sure we were covered before. I would, obviously wouldn't have made a nine million dollar investment in the vertical construction of the property after I developed it if I thought maybe somehow TDOT was going to come in and squash my plans, so. Thanks to you, Mr. Martin, I, I followed through to make sure that was, my hands were clean in that regard.
All right, I'll let someone else talk for a little bit.
Any other commissioners have questions of the applicant? Commissioner Slattery, go ahead. You're recognized.
I think what you built is beautiful. I think they're, they're quite beautiful.
Thank you.
I wasn't sure about it right there when you started, but they are beautiful properties. I'm not an attorney, so, Mr. Cook, if you'll bear with me, is there any way we can undo? Can we bring the language down maybe in something that's filed? I agree with Commissioner Hasty. I think that this may have been third or fourth attempt at getting your request approved rather than your first shot at us. I appreciate your apology because it, it was rather strongly worded. So without a law degree, I'm asking, can we do something to take this down a notch? Can we supplement this letter with, with a new letter, with a new date on it, with a new attempt? Because there's, there is obviously some pretty intense feeling around the letter. And I think it was a rather simple request. So if there is something we can do, and I'll, I'll ask you, Keith, I'll ask Lance, I see you in the room. Can we erase this? Can we restart our game? And all come at this with a, a little more, as I prayed from when we started, a collective approach to do what's best for our city?
Can I speak to a little bit of history of the letter too?
Sure.
Because he didn't act alone on that.
Sure.
Just to be, just to be frank, the, the letter did evolve as we work with staff. We had various conversations with staff and commissioners and, and various offices in the city about the hardship that I'm having. You know, not being able to sell for, for such a long period of time after so much effort. We attempted to first go the route of a BZA application. Because of the, the stipulation being tied to a zoning, we were told we couldn't do that. Through speaking with my attorney, we started looking at the circumstances of how the, the restriction was put on the property. And to remind everybody that through many meetings in this room with Planning Commission and BOMA, it was repeatedly said, I have, I said, I have full intentions to sell these units, which I have done, I've made attempt to, anyway. But I would like the ability to have the option to rent if so needed. And at the time, I was suggesting that we, we often will put rental restrictions, will self-impose rental restrictions, like we'll make sure that CCRs say things like, no one owner can own more than three units, no short-term rentals, things of that nature. And I was hoping to have that sort of thing take place on this property. It, it literally came down to all the discussion being had at the last BOMA meeting and an amendment being made, that I make an amendment to revise the ordinance to say owner occupancy only. There was a motion, it was approved, then the, the original item was then presented, and there was a motion, and it was approved. So all the offering of trying to figure out how to have some flexibility in a, in a, in a case scenario that it wasn't working out as for sale product got taken off the table and replaced with a blanket, just don't, don't rent anything ever. And that's, that's how it played out.
Sure. I appreciate that.
So in hindsight, I probably should have waved my hand and said-
Absolutely. All of our retirement accounts would look much differently if we could go back and make some decisions differently.
Right, but that's where we are today with it. And I don't want to be here any more than, than anybody else asking for a, a request like this. But I can just tell you candidly, our plan is not to go take these to, say, a rental company or because, I'll be honest with you, you have sold properties to people like that. So I know how to do that. But that is not, that is not what we're going to do here. Our plan is to make these more marketable, simply put. We want it, we've had people come in saying, oh, I think I could, I'd love to make one of these as an investment property for myself. I'd love to rent it to, you know, my niece for two years, or whatever it may be. But that's just all off the table. So we're, we're struggling when it comes to people. We've, we've even had people be denied a, a loan, a mortgage because of the stipulation. Because they just, there was some, and I'll be honest, it was some screwy mortgage anyway.
Sure.
And they were, they were on thin ice with their credit and all that. But still, to hear things like that, it's kind of pushed us in this manner to say, what can we do to get some life back into this thing? And, and not see it, not see it go.
Then, then at the risk of sounding school marmish, what you're saying right now is a beautiful way to come to the Planning Commission, from my perspective only. From my perspective only, that is a beautiful way to come at this.
And to answer your question, which is certainly well-taken.
Get near the microphone for the, the broadcast, please.
To answer your initial question, Commissioner Slattery, which is certainly well-taken, I think that perhaps Mr. Ely and I could talk with, with, with Mr. Ray about what some of those reasonable restrictions could look like. And you understand, the, the issue here is the total restriction.
Sure.
Okay, so if that is something you all would desire for us to perhaps
I'd love to, yeah.
deferral this, have some conversations, what would something, you know, more reasonable, more legally palatable, look like? Then we're certainly happy to have those conversations.
I certainly can't speak on behalf of the entire commission, but that sounds reasonable to me.
Sure.
Okay. Hold on one second. So, so, so if you're, if you're requesting deferral to further work with city council and then maybe come back with, with some different things, would you additionally rescind this particular letter that the commissioner was talking about, just at this time?
Yeah, then how about we just withdraw, and we'll work with Lance, and we'll submit in a different fashion.
We can still go through this. It can, if the, if the Planning Commission determines a deferral, you could still defer, then come back at the next meeting to, to present any changes to your request. You could do that. And what I was saying is just the letter that the commissioner was talking about, and that Mr. Hasty was talking about, on just rescinding that at this point in time.
I guess what I was suggesting the-
Can you step up a little bit, Mr. Ely? Thank you.
I was suggesting the withdrawal in a hopes that a new application would no longer include this letter, nor be a part of anything considered for the, the new request. So I don't know if that's, that's for these guys to-
The same way to just defer it.
Okay.
Is it the same thing either way?
Okay, so you're good with deferring then?
Yes, we're happily.
We're, we're-
But yeah, yeah.
We have questions of other, okay, while you're here. But we're going to accept your deferral, all right?
Thank you.
If, if, yeah, if the vote goes. Okay, Commissioner Hardwick, I saw you were next. And then Commissioner Kerr, you'll be after that. Go ahead.
So I kind of had two ways to go with this. One is obviously the yes or no, or are we going to even have a discussion about changing some of the restrictions? But then also, I'd like to get into some of the same questions we had when this came up two years ago, to talk about that. Have you been able to sell any of the units? And what is your plan if, if some of this were changed? What, how, what would it look like? And I think that's what you guys are going to have with discussion. So I, I'm more than happy to make that motion once everyone else has a chance to talk about this.
Commissioner Kerr, I saw you were up next.
Yeah, a couple, couple of questions. One, I think you do need to unring the bell on this letter, no question. And I don't think it's as simple as just doing an amendment or resubmit. I think that we have to carefully memorialize how we move from this point to rescission of your letter. Because your letter is fairly threatening from just a city governance perspective. And I'm relatively new to, to this commission, but I can tell you, when I first read this, I'm like, wow, something's gone wrong here for us to be trying to make a motion to, to approve this. So I'm with you to unring it, but I think, and we may need to get Lance involved here, from just a careful memorialization of what, where we are, how we get to the next level, and make sure we memorialize that appropriately. And you to pull your letter back and explain why you're pulling it back, not just you're pulling it back. This is record, it's there. You, you can't unring this document. That's what I'm concerned about. So that, that would be a request of mine. Of course, work with Lance in terms of how to do that. But there's better ways to do this than to be here talking about the tone of this letter. And I'm with you a hundred percent. I, I want you to be successful, so don't get me wrong. But the way that this letter reads and what you're trying to accomplish, I think was not very wise, just in my opinion. I think there's a way that you could do it better that would give us a cleaner start on this thing. So that, that's my request, is that we tie it down, not only that we're going to do it, but how we got there, and memorialize that. So that, that's my request.
Fair enough.
Thank you, Commissioner Kerr. Okay, can I let Charles speak? He was up. Charles, you're next in the queue. You go ahead.
I agree with Commissioner Slattery. The, the project looks good. I mean, I think you've done a good job. But now, any discussions that we're going to have, I'm not in favor of changing anything as far as the development and how it's development, you know, and how we're going to proceed. We want that same product, whether it's for sale or for rental. And I think
Well, I'd love to speak to you, too.
With some, with some proper conditionings on rentals, some of which you mentioned, I think I could support you, Lynn.
Thank you, Commissioner. Our city attorney Lance, will you come up and-
I've been in Mr. Cook's position before, where my letter was taken not quite the way that I intended it to take. We attorneys cannot write warm stuff. It's just not anywhere within our abilities. And when, when I read the letter, I, which I do appreciate letters like this to give me a heads up on what law is at stake and how particular facts might apply to what laws would apply or would, would be relevant. So I, I didn't read the letter as intimidating, but I understand how someone that doesn't do this like twelve hours or twenty hours a day could. But for example, when we're, the, the law at issue here is a regulatory taking. One of the laws at issue, that's just the way that the state and the federal government has, has defined it. So just to point out that, the, what the law is and how the city could be violating that, I think from an attorney's point of view is a little bit different than accusing the city of taking property from somebody. And I'm not here, I've never defended the opposing attorney before, so I'm not here to, to do that, believe me. But I do know Mr. Cook because we've had several cases together before I became a city attorney. Since I became a city attorney, we've had a couple of really big situations with, with, that Mr. Cook represented the other side, like the Westlake Plan. He represented those property owners that we turned from commercial to residential. Mr. Cook is always a very good person to work with, very amenable, very rational and reasonable. We, we have a good working relationship because we know that we can trust each other, not to pull tricks on each other, not to, not, no one's trying to intimidate the other. So I do feel a little bit bad because I, I didn't read the letter like that, but I can understand how some people could take it like that. But knowing Mr. Cook the way that I do, I, I can assure you that that, that wasn't the case, was to threaten the city. He's worked in this town as long as I have, twenty-one years. And he's been before this board in BOMA many times. And he's, there are attorneys like the ones that you're thinking of, I promise you. But I would vouch that Mr. Cook is not that way. That's all I'm saying. If you have any other questions for me, I'll be right here.
All right.
Thank you, Doc, or Lance.
Thank you, Lance.
Marty, you need to thank him again.
I wanted to get to the microphone so it was on the record there.
There you go.
Smile, I saw it.
Yeah.
I am happy to speak to, uh, Chairman Hasty's, uh, comments about the look and feel of the neighborhood, if you want, or we can save that for the next time.
No, go ahead, Mr. Ely, speak up.
That, because it, it's been a concern of ours too, and, and it, it's actually one of the things that led us to question why we're, um, so hard and fast about renting these as we are today. You've seen what's been built and you've seen the way it's been maintained. The property is already under, um, an association, homeowners association management. We set that up on the front end so that anybody that potentially does buy a unit, they know what they're buying in that regard too. So, uh, we, 95% of the time use Gertner as our management company. Gertner Properties is managing this property. Um, and they, uh, they're already funded through the rest of the year for all the maintenance and so forth that you see happening. It's, everything's fully irrigated, uh, everything is mowed by the, the association, even down to the pressure washing of the houses individually, of the exterior of the houses, things of that nature. They're all insured by the association. So when, when that, um, when we realized, I guess, what we've built and what we've set up, we started asking ourselves, well, if someone were to purchase one of these units, turn around and rent it to someone else, what would us as the general public see different? Other than if you, you just would have to not like a renter at that point? You, you're not going to get anything at face value or, or otherwise that's going to change from the, the general public's perspective. In fact, as I understand it, we're going to be making more taxes, uh, tax dollars when these things do rent. I just got a letter from the county, um, changing some of my, my residential properties from, uh, 25% tax basis to a 40% tax basis because I am renting the property. So, uh, I guess that's something to look forward to if you're concerned about how the city may benefit. But generally, the general public is not going to see any difference whether this is a renter or this is a owner occupant. And they will still be owned in some fashion individually because we'll self-impose that restriction that we can go on to as we work with Lance on language.
Okay, Commissioner Martin, I see you're in the queue.
Yeah, I just wanted to throw a caveat out. Owner, uh, uh, homes where the owners live them, uh, live in them versus, uh, when they're leased, can increase density and parking demand. And an influx of long-term tenants in the single-family zones can lead to overcrowding. So when, I guess you guys have your discussion, I guess I'm talking to the planning staff. But when you guys have that discussion, um, you know, there was a concern about the ingress egress as it is today. So if there's an additional, um, if, if an additional load is created, you know, we may need to look at that entrance exit, see if there's anything else we can do.
Okay. Commissioner Slattery, I see you're in the queue.
Just, um, to reiterate what Commissioner Hasty said, when we do come back to this, my expectation is that adherence to the design, that there's not going to be an attempt to start easing off. I think everyone has lived through neighborhoods that start with one plan and then as you move into phase two and three, you suddenly start making changes and they're almost always downwards. So my expectation is that with all of the, the restrictions that you will put in place or the, the structure around a rental proposal, that there will be a strong adherence to the currently approved design plan for the rest of the development of the neighborhood. And if not, I'll get my attorney.
I can, I can say that you, you have a very good staff that ensures that already.
Yes, they do. Thank you.
Any other commissioners have questions, comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion if anyone would like to make it.
I'm assuming I'm making a motion that we defer this.
Yes, we're going to defer, and if we defer this motion, you.
For one meeting.
Right.
We're deferring for one meeting for the applicant to return with a proposal better defining the rental, um, covenants or, or guidelines that you would put in place.
Right, with our city attorney.
With our city attorney.
Yeah, also, understanding that the public hearing will remain open during this timeframe.
Okay, that's what I move.
Anything else I need to make sure?
No, I think that'll do it.
Okay, thank you for that motion. Zach, did you get all that? All right, do I have a second? Okay, Mr. Hasty's a second, we'll do a roll call vote.
Motion to approve deferral, pass with seven yeses.
Thank you, Zach.
Thank you, everyone, thank you for the discussion, and again, my apologies for the way my letter landed on your desk.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is, let's see, Lakeview Acres, Lot 1, setback deviation, final plat. Owner, Rhett and Chris Evans. Location is 176 Cumberland Drive, parcel 171D E 014.00. And the leading planning staff is Caitlin, would you like to discuss this one for us, please?
Thank you. Um, so the applicants, Rhett and Christine Evans, um, are requesting a setback devi- deviation to reduce the front setback from 75 feet to 65 feet. The reason for this is they are proposing to construct a two-car attached garage in front of their existing garage to extort trailers and other items to keep them out of the plain view. The proposed garage is going to be 35 feet by 25 feet and will feature a 10-foot tall garage door instead of the typical seven-to-eight-foot tall garage or, excuse me, seven-to-eight-foot door. As you can see on the screen, it'll be to the left of the existing garage. And the exterior will match the existing facade of the home and garage. The reason why the applicant is coming before the planning commission is due to, um, the proposed setbacks meet the current zoning ordinance bulk standards, so, which is 30 feet. Because they are not going below that 30 feet, they cannot go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So because it does meet those bulk standards, they are coming to you to request that variance. Planning Commission is the only body that can grant this variance, eh, or the deviation, sorry. Also, let's see here, there is a final plat, the, that includes, um, the existing final plat includes uh, other properties within the subdivision that have a mix of 75 feet, 65 feet, and 50-foot front setbacks. Let's see, and then in 2018, the plat on the screen was approved that is directly next to them with, it was subdivided and both lots have a 30-front setback. They are going to be required to do a three-page plat amendment as part of their approval, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Caitlin. Okay, are there any questions by anybody on the planning commission of Caitlin? Go ahead, Commissioner Evans.
Yeah, that's kind of close for home, to home for me. That, that particular section of Cumberland Drive is already really tight. That particular house already sits in front of a house that was recently remodeled on the left. If I were that neighbor, I would be upset, but I wouldn't tell my neighbor that I was upset because I still had to live by them. Uh, in this particular case, that, uh, the garage, uh, is said to have a 10-foot tall door, which means that it's going to overshadow the existing house. It'll have to have at least an 11- or 12-foot ceiling where the house existing has an eight-foot ceiling. So it partially covers the front door if you look at it from the front and the right side wall of the house has no windows. So when you stick it out in front of, uh, everything else except the one was that, the, the old property over there to the side that they split into two lots, uh, it, it, it's just not consistent with what's el, what else is there to do that. And it's none of my business what the house looks like, but it appears that, uh, you need about seven feet to do what they contemplate doing out of that 10 feet that they're asking for. They're building on to the existing garage. The existing garage, unless it's being, uh, continued, unless it continues to be used as a garage, uh, seven feet of that garage could be used for the new garage. Bottom line is, I don't see the hardship in this, that, that we need to prove to, to grant this variance.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Any other commissioners have comments, questions of Caitlin? Commissioner Hasty, I see you're lit up.
This is a variance request, I know, but, uh, you know, if somebody goes to BZA and asking for variances or changes or, or whatnot, the neighbors get a letter. They send out notices. Was there any notification of any kind for this request?
There was a courtesy notice sent to all the neighbors within 250 feet. There was a courtesy letter sent to all the neighbors within 250 feet. That's not our typical practice because it doesn't require it. But we felt, the staff felt the need that that was needed. Because the, as Mr. Evans did speak to, it is a very close area. So we didn't want to just state, hey, this is being done without letting them know.
So the neighbors knew.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Yeah, and we are, um, um, we did that because it felt like the right thing to do. But we're going to codify that, uh, in our, um, changes that are going to come before you here in the next couple of months to where, when we're doing a deviation like this, that there'll be notice, uh, official notice that'll be given to the, uh, to the neighbors. Because we, we feel like that's the right thing to do. Looking back, probably, probably prior to a few years ago, when we kind of determined what was the right way to do this, these things would have went to the BZA and they would have judged it and made a decision, but, uh, actually, they did not have the authority necessarily to make that decision. So with, with this particular thing, it's kind of confusing, you know, because they're meeting the minimum standard, but then you have the recorded, uh, subdivision plat which has that setbacks. And, you know, it's just something where here, they are all, they are a little bit all over the place, you know, but you got to look at the unique, uniqueness of this particular lot and the things around it. But, you know, it's understandable that you're, if you're in a neighborhood and it's platted and it's all platted, I don't know what this one is, but if it was all 100-foot setback and then, you know, it wouldn't be right for the staff to just grant that a 30-foot was the minimum zoning requirement and then to allow that to reduce down to that. So that's, that's why it's coming before you all. And we've done, uh, one or two others that have done this way. And it's kind of odd because it's called a deviation, it's not really called a variance, uh, but that's basically what, that's basically what it is. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hardwick, you were next in the queue.
So Caitlin, did any of the neighbors raise their hand or call you?
They have not. The, the applicant did state that the neighbor did come to them and ask if they needed to come tonight. I, I'm not sure if, I can't remember if she said that they, said that they weren't able to come. You can come to the.
If you're the applicant. Well, as the applicant, you can step up to the podium. State your name and your address for the record.
176 Cumberland Drive.
Thank you.
And in fact, when my neighbors got the letters, they all, they called me, are you the one making the garage? Oh, we'll help you, you know, I mean, there isn't one objection to any of it. We're all really close neighbors and friends and, um, I, you know, I asked her, I said, well, should they send an email? Because they're out of town, you know, the one that'll be looking at it the most. But, um, nobody in the neighborhood's object, objected to it at all. In fact, they just said, how tall is it going to be, um, what's it going to be made out of? And I reassured them, I've lived in that neighborhood 40 years. I lived in the house that Mr. Evans pointed out, I lived in the house that has the house behind it for 30 years and then I've lived in this one for 19. And we just want to add this garage because he's just retired and needs a workshop.
Understood. If you'll stay, Commissioner Hardwick has a question, go ahead.
So, so we, we've not heard from the neighbors, so we're assuming they're okay.
I have, they had them on my texts showing all my, all the compliments, here's the comments.
I heard what Commissioner Evans said about the house to the left, but the house to the right seems to still be in front of you, if I remember correctly, when I drove that today. That the house, there's, I think, was it a white brick house, maybe?
Yeah, there's nobody behind me.
No, that, it was in front of where your house is today.
Oh, yeah.
Saw that wrong.
That's the one we used to live in.
So the.
Yeah, yeah.
The how, you're wanting to keep your existing garage, this is just going to be workshop?
Yeah, it's just going to add on to it.
It's going to be the roof line?
Yes, um, he wants a 10-foot door because we have a boat.
But you want to be able, maybe a camper to go in?
Put it, put it in there and get it out of sight.
So you're looking at the roof line's going to be what, 14 foot, 15 foot?
I don't, I sent, I think the. Did they, did he send it to you, the, um, garage guy? The picture of the 10, uh, 10-foot door, the minimum, you would know, what did he tell you? 12-foot ceilings.
So it would be a raised ceiling, or a raised roof line?
Well, I was just curious.
It's a two-foot raised roof line with what he just explained.
Okay.
And it'll be attached to the existing one, you won't cut the roof line, it'll, I mean, I'm going to live there, I want it to look nice and it'll be brick and.
I'm planting in a three-foot hole where the, it's already paved. The yard comes up quite a bit right there, so I'm starting three, four, five, and grave.
Understood. Any other questions by the commissioners? Any other comments? Okay. Well, with that being said, I'll entertain a motion. All right, to test the will, I'll make the motion. Okay, I make a motion to accept with all comments as presented. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right, I have a second from Charles Hasty. So roll call vote.
Motion to approve, pass with five yeses and two noes.
Thank you, Zach, appreciate it. All right. Next on the agenda is Resolution 2025 dash 02. It's a resolution recommending acknowledgement of the, well, it's double stated there. Acknowledgement of the acknowledgement. Okay, so I'm going to restate this a little bit, you all. The word dedication has been strict or struck from this comment. So it's a resolution recommending the acknowledgement of the completed streets in the Hunt Club, Phase 11, Hendersonville, Sumner County, Tennessee. Okay, and the reason it's an acknowledgement, this is a private road behind a gate. Okay, and so everybody understand that we're acknowledging the road was built to the city standards, curbs, the gutters, everything's the way it was supposed to be, but it is behind a gate and it is a private street. So do I have a?
Let me just share one thing, I'm sorry.
Keith, go right ahead.
I, I will just note, uh, because it's a little bit out of order, uh, the Public Works Committee typically meets, Boma's Public Works Committee meets and approves this before it comes to us. It's okay to do it this way as well, but, uh, I just wanted to acknowledge that, that, um, it's still going to go to the Public Works Committee before it goes on to Boma. But it's okay for us to go ahead and act on it now, so, in this process.
And I'll entertain a motion if anyone has one. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, Mr. Hard.
So Sarah will tell us if it, it does meet the city standards.
Yes, that's correct. So we could, with what you're saying, we could just also make that contention upon the Boma Public Works Committee approval as well. So that just adds a little bit more.
So if anyone would like to make a motion along that line? Okay, Mr. Hasty, will you make that motion? Okay, uh, Mr. Hasty, did you hear the part of the motion that you're going to make sure it goes through?
Goes through the proper process, it goes through the general committee.
Thank you, just making sure you got all that.
Really, I think more just because it's a guarantee that.
This is really, I think, more just because it's a guarantee that streets get built to our standards.
Yes.
Do they have to post a bond for that, for maintenance, like they do any other public street after acceptance?
Yes, they do, for public streets, so we're still making sure in that first year that they're warranty.
That is correct.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, and Mr. Kerr, I heard you second, is that correct? All right, so we'll do a roll call vote.
Motion to approve, pass with seven yeses.
Thank you, Zach. Okay, next is number eleven, staff level projects approved. You have the Hendersonville Football Stadium site plan, the Merrill Hyde Magnet School Tennis Court site plan. One is at one twenty-three Cherokee Road, the other at Township Drive. Uh, any comments on that from you, Keith?
No, we appreciate, um, uh, the cooperation, working with our friends at the Sumner County Board of Education on those projects.
All right, thank you. Next is staff level projects pending, Ferguson Acres, Lot Two. I'll just hit the highlights on these real quick, Forest Retreat subdivision, Lot Two and Three consolidation, Friends at Indian Lake, Glen Oak Commons, Mansker Farms, Phase Nineteen, Section One-B, Millstone, Phase Six, MTO partner, prop- Partners Property consolidation, WA Shival Edition consolidation, Woodland Park. That's all of those that are on the staff level projects pending, any comments from anyone on that? Anything from you, Keith?
I do have just one quick thing, I was, uh, I was on vacation last week, and I really appreciate the staff taking care of everything. Uh, they do, they do a phenomenal job. But one thing I, I just wanted to mention, uh, you know, when, and, and a lot of people are gonna be on vacation at different times, uh, in the next couple of months. But I think something worth noting is, you know, when me and my wife are gone for a week and coming back to our home here in Hendersonville, it's always good to come back home and, uh, you know, and get kind of fresh eyes, uh, back on our community, and I'm, I'm very proud of our community. And, uh, it's great when you go on vacation and you're able to come back home, uh, to a place like Hendersonville, where it's almost like a vacation, uh, you know, it's a beau- this is a beautiful built environment, and it's a beautiful, um, uh, physical environment as well. And, uh, so I just really appreciate this community, and, and me and my family, uh, really enjoy it here. I just, I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Well, now we're up to planning director comments, you have any comments you would like to make?
That was it.
That's it?
That was it.
Home is like vacation, right? I agree. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Hasty made it, do I have a second? All oppo- I mean, all agree, say aye. Anybody oppose? Okay, you're on your own, you have to stay. Thanks.